Good evening and welcome to the 575th Planning Commission Meeting. This meeting is being held virtually with the GoToMeeting platform. The meeting agenda and the speaker's sign-up request form were made public on May 5, 2020, and are also on the city's website. Before I ask Ms. Quillan to start the roll, I would like to ask Robert Love, Deputy Director for the City of Laurel Department of Economic and Community Development, to please let everyone on the line know what city employees are on the line joining us this evening. Robert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Bill Goddard, City Administrator, should be joining us. We do have Luann Cook, Deputy City Administrator, on the line. As far as ECD staff, we have Christian Pulley, myself, Robert Love, La Quillan, Monte Burrow, and Josh Mitchum. We have Larry Taub, the City Solicitor, on the line, and we also have IT staff on the line.
Thank you. Ms. Quillan, if you will, please call the roll.
Council President Sidnor?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish? Mr. Welford?
Here.
Ms. Bonner? Chairwoman Bettman?
Here.
You have a quorum. Chairwoman Bettman?
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 2, the approval of minutes from the March 10, 2020 meeting. We have each received those and reviewed those. If there are no questions for staff, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, this is Rick Wilson. I move to approve the minute and pass it off to Mr. Welford.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Quillan, if you will, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
I vote aye.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, and Robert, let me just say, if you see either John or Christiana come in, if you would just let us know at that time, if you see any more come in. Moving on to... Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, variance application number 900 for 15409 Laurelton Drive filed by Transforming Architecture for Recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members. The applicant is seeking approval of a variance to reduce the left side yard setback from eight feet, as stated in the city's Unified Land Division Code, Section 20-6.16, Schedule of Area Yard and Height Regulations for Residential Uses, to seven feet at the property located at 15409 Laurelton Drive, Laurel, Maryland, as a code 2070, Zoned R5. The purpose of the variance is to allow for the replacement of an existing 10-foot-by- 10-foot-to-inch-by-18-foot-by-11-carport garage that measures approximately 20 feet by 20 feet. The purpose of the variance is that the applicant states that the existing carport cannot fit their vehicle. The proposed carport replacement would be in violation of the ULDC setback by one foot. In addition to the carport, the applicant proposes to construct a screened-in porch and extend the driveway, both of which would be in compliance with the ULD setback and lot coverage standards. So, as you guys can see, this is the overhead view of the property. The City of Laurel Board of Appeals is authorized to grant a variance based upon the criteria set forth in Section 20-5 Subsection D of the Unified Land Development Code, which states that by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of specific parcels of the property at the time of the original enactment of this chapter or amendments. And then Section 2, such variance is the minimum reasonable necessary to overcome the fore-said exceptional conditions. Section 3, or Point Number 3, such variance will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of adjoining or neighboring properties. These provisions, however, shall not permit the Board to grant any variances to any setbacks or yard requirements for the property's own in commercial or industrial purposes. Based on the applicant's application, they would be in compliance with the provisions set forth in Section 20-5 Subsection D. And the staff recommends that the City of Laurel Planning Commission recommend approval to the City of Laurel Board of Appeals for variance application number 900 with the following conditions. Condition 1, the applicant shall obtain all required City of Laurel building permits; the applicant shall obtain a City of Laurel right-of-way permit; and the applicant shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations in the development of the property. That concludes the report, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Mr. Welford?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just one. Did we get any... Did we notify the neighbors and we get anything back?
Yes, sir. We sent out a notice of the applicant actually placed a zoning sign that indicated that what the variance was going to do on the property. We also sent out certified letters for adjoining properties, and we did not receive any objections to the variance as stated in the application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Sidnor?
I don't have any questions, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. This is for Recommendation to the Board of Appeals, which does not require a public hearing. However, I would like to just ask, since we're not all in the same room, if there is anyone signed in on the call from the public that would like to speak on this. I know we have the company available for questions, but is there any resident that is wishing to speak? Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this is...
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the variance application number 900 for 15409 Laurelton Drive filed by Transforming Architecture for Recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Quillan. If you will, please call the roll.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
I vote aye.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, amended site and landscape plan application and resolution number 20-05-PC, Olive on Main, 504 Main Street, filed by Nadal Hishma. Included in this agenda item is the public hearing on the application and final action by the Planning Commission. We'll now hear the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. Amended site and landscape plan application was filed on March 9, 2020 by Nadal Hishma to enclose existing patio and construct a roof with four skylights over existing outdoor located at 504 Main Street, Laurel, Maryland 2070. Under date of March 10, 2020, the application and a cover letter asking for comments were sent to the state and local agencies and a memorandum to the City of Laurel Departments. Comments from the local, state agency, and City of Laurel Departments are stated in the staff reports. On March 12, 2020, a letter explaining the nature of the application and advising of the scheduled public hearing before the City of Laurel Planning Commission was sent by standard mail to all contentious property owners. All return receipts were received. The file contains the affidavit signed by the applicant attesting that a zoning sign has been placed on the subject property, has remained, and shall remain until a decision is reached by the Planning Commission. It is recommended that the City of Laurel Planning Commission approve the amended site and landscape plan for 504 Main Street with the following conditions. The applicant shall obtain all required City of Laurel permits; all construction equipment must access the property through the driveway located in the rear of the building; the applicant must obtain City of Laurel Historic District Commission approval; the applicant shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations in the development of the property. That concludes the reading of the file, Madam Chairwoman.
I will check with Commissioners and Council President if there are any questions. Mr. Welford?
No questions. I would just like to say that I think it's a very good idea for the restaurant to reopen under the COVID-19 conditions is probably very necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I concur with Mr. Welford's analysis. This is a great investment and very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Sidnor?
No questions, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do not have any questions, and I too think this is a great idea and look forward to it if it passes. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. We did not have anyone signed up in advance to speak. We do have the applicant, I believe, on the phone. If there are any questions for the applicant from the Commissioners, I forgot to mention that. But at this point, I would like to open the public hearing, and I will pause to see if anyone on the line would like to speak. I would like to, at this point, hearing no one, I will close the public hearing, and if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion for the amended site and landscape plan application and resolution number 20-05-PC for Olive on Main, 503 Main Street, filed by Nadal Hishma, for approval as recommended by staff with their conditions.
I second. This is Rick.
Thank you. Ms. Quillan, if you will, please call the roll.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, the amended site and landscape plan application and resolution number 20-06-PC, El Pariso Bar and Grill at 143 Bowie Road, filed by Jonathan Veleta. And this agenda item includes the public hearing on the application and the final action by Planning Commission. This time, I'll ask for the staff report.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and fellow board members. Amended site and landscape plan application was filed on March 13, 2020 by Jonathan Veleta to construct a deck on the side of existing building located at 143 Bowie Road, Laurel, Maryland 20707. Under date of April 10, 2020, the application and a cover letter asking for comments were sent to the state and local agency and a memorandum to the City of Laurel Departments. Comments from the local, state agency, and City of Laurel Departments are stated in the staff reports. On April 28, 2020, a letter explaining the nature of the application and advising of the scheduled public hearing before the City of Laurel Planning Commission was sent by standard mail to all contingency property owners. All receipts were received. A file contains an affidavit signed by the applicant attesting that a zoning sign has been placed on the subject property, has remained, and shall remain until the decision is reached by the Planning Commission. It is recommended that the City of Laurel Planning Commission approve the amended site and landscape plan for 143 Bowie Road with the following conditions. The applicant shall obtain a City of Laurel deck permit prior to construction; the applicant shall secure the deck with approved boiler type by the Office of Fire Marshal and Permit Services; the applicant shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations in the development of the property; and the applicant shall ensure that all food preparation take place inside the building located at 143 Bowie Road. The applicant is on the line for any question. That concludes the reading of the file. Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Commissioners? Mr. Wilson?
No questions here. Thank you.
Mr. Welford?
No, thank you.
Council President Sidnor?
No questions, ma'am.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing on this application. We did not have anyone sign up in advance to speak. I will pause so that if anyone wants to speak, they can take their call off of mute. Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing, and if there are no questions for either staff or the applicant who is on the phone, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, this is Rick Wilson. I will move to approve the amended site and landscape plan application and including the resolution number 20-06-PC for the El Pariso Bar and Grill at 143 Bowie Road, and I want to commend the staff on a great report.
Thank you.
Bill Welford, I will second Mr. Wilson's motion.
Thank you. Ms. Quillan, if you will, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
I vote aye.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, the detailed MXT Final Plan, Westside Application and Resolution number 20-04-PC, Commercial 13601 and 14501, Westside Boulevard, filed by Strip Matter Land LLC. This agenda item includes the public hearing on the application and the final action by the Planning Commission. At this time, I will ask for the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The applicant, Strip Matter County LLC, is seeking a detailed MXT site plan approval to develop one 10,000-square-foot retail building and associated site amenities on Lot 3, which include drive aisles, sidewalks, sight lighting, parking, and stormwater management facilities located in the area known as Westside Shops. There will be two vehicle access points from Westside Boulevard and four vehicle access points from the proposed townhouse community into the commercial area. The Unified Land Development Code requires that one parking space per 200 square feet of gross leasable area. Lot 3 will include a 10,000-square-foot retail building, which will require 50 parking spaces. The applicant will provide 65 parking spaces for Lot 3, which includes four ADA spaces. The applicant will also provide an additional 26 parking spaces for the benefit of Lot 1 and Lot 2, for a total of 91 parking spaces for this application. The applicant meets all landscaping requirements per the code. Per the applicant's traffic signal warrant analysis results, along with the recommendation of a number of city departments, the applicant will be required to install a traffic signal at the Van Dusen Road/Westside Boulevard/Anderson Way intersection. Staff recommends that the City of Laurel Planning Commission approve the detailed MXT site plan for Westside Shops, Lot 3, application 903, with the following conditions. All construction shall conform to ordinance number 1940, as well as the detailed MXT site and landscape plan as approved by the City of Laurel Planning Commission. The applicant must obtain all required City of Laurel permits. The manual on uniform traffic control device, standard stop sign and stop bars needs to be placed at both entrances prior to exiting Westside Boulevard. The applicant must apply for a traffic signal permit with the State Highway Administration within 60 days of the passage of Westside Residential Application 902 or Westside Shops, Lot 3, Application 903, whichever is first, and must install a traffic signal at Van Dusen Road/Westside Boulevard/Anderson Way intersection within seven months of the final State Highway Administration permit issuance for the installation of the traffic signal. The applicant shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations for the development of the property. And now, I'll invite the applicant's representative, Ed Gibbs, to speak about this portion of the project.
Good evening, Chair Bettman, members of the Planning Commission, Council President Sidnor, Edward Gibbs here, on behalf of the applicant, Strip Matter Land LLC and Strip Matter County Let me just do a little housekeeping here at the outset and indicate that we have a number of folks who went ahead and registered to speak, including Mr. Rob Strip Matter and Blake Atrice, both of Strip Matter. We do not anticipate that their testimony will be necessary, but certainly they are available for questions. Similarly, on the commercial final site plan, we have signed up Mr. Brandon Rowe, who is our civil engineer, and Mr. Mike Lenhart, who is our traffic engineer. Again, they're both available for questions. As everyone on the commission is certainly aware and familiar, this has been a longstanding project, one which my client and I have been very pleased to be involved in with the City of Laurel and the partnership that we've been able to forge during the years that this project has moved forward. You will recall that when we came in to revise the conceptual site plan, we had experienced substantial difficulty in attracting a grocery store anchor for the commercial component, and therefore, we sought approval, and you and the city council and mayor were kind enough to grant that approval to downsize the commercial component to approximately 40,000 square feet and to include 81 townhomes in the area, the surplus area that was originally intended to be devoted to the larger commercial component. So, this particular site plan, we have two this evening, but this particular site plan is for one of the four lots that will comprise the commercial component. When we came in after obtaining approval of the revision to the conceptual site plan, we were able to obtain approval of a new preliminary subdivision plan. Obviously, the four lots that were created with that preliminary subdivision plan have not gone to record yet. They cannot until after approval of this detailed site plan. But the site plan you have before you does, in fact, reflect that additional land area. So, there will be two points of access, of direct access, from Westside Boulevard, and the primary access point will result in a private road running through the commercial component with lots 1 and 2 to the south and lots 3 and 4 to the north. So, this particular plan is for what will be Lot 3. It will be a retail building consisting of 10,000 square feet, which can be devoted to any number of tenants, probably somewhere between four and seven individual tenants, depending upon type of demand, how much square footage an individual tenant will need, et cetera. The elevations, which have been filed with the application, show attention to detail, attractive buildings, we believe, brick from grade up to a point of about 10 feet. Beyond that, ephes, attractive glazing for the doors, canopies over the entrances, light sconces affixed to the brick walls, and an attractive rooftop treatment, sort of a parapet treatment at the top of the wall. We have presented architecture that has views of all four sides of the building. The architecture for the rear of the building is also quite attractive, we think. We've put a lot of attention into that. Again, it has brick from grade up to 10 feet and ephes above that. So, with that having been said, we would indicate that we agree with the staff recommendation. We appreciate the opportunity to work with Mr. Love and Ms. Pulley on processing this detailed site plan. We also agree with all of the conditions which have been recommended by the staff in their report, including the condition with regard to the traffic signal. We have, in fact, filed our traffic signal warrant study with the State Highway Administration. You know, we said all along, years ago, from the inception of this project, that we thought a traffic signal would be found warranted at the intersection of Van Dusen Road and Westside Boulevard, and that that would occur at this phase of the development, and we believe that will come to fruition. We received positive feedback from the State Highway Administration, and we completely agree with the condition, which requires us to file the actual permit for the signal. The warrant analysis has already been filed and reviewed. We'll file the permit within 60 days from the approval of the site plan, and the signal will be installed within seven months from the date of issuance of the permit to install by the State Highway Administration. Our traffic consultant, Mr. Lenhart, has indicated that, in general, it will take somewhere between four and six months to install the signal once the permit has been issued, and so, we asked for seven months just to provide for any unexpected timing contingency that we might encounter, and I think those timelines were pretty much agreed with by your Public Works Department. Mr. Love could certainly weigh in on that. But with that having been said, I'm more than happy to answer any questions, as is all of the members of our team, and I'll defer at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. If I could first ask the Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Mr. Welford?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just one. I know that the original preliminary site plan garnered a tremendous amount of attention from the surrounding community. Have we heard anything? I'm asking staff, have you heard anything relative to this final site plan?
Commissioner Wilson, I received one phone call in the past three months from a citizen out there just asking for information. They were wondering if there was going to be a traffic light that was going to be included with this. I did inform them that, yes, we're going to require one, and they were pleased with that answer.
Okay. And then, there was basically an agreement on, you know, how much retail versus how much residential, and I believe that this is in compliance with kind of that general understanding that the community understood. Is that true?
That is correct. If you recall, in previous meetings, we've had conditions that require them to file both the building permit for the commercial area at the same time that they file for the residential area. That was a concern that maybe there was going to... That was a concern that maybe they were gonna, there was gonna be maybe an extension of the residential, but with that condition, that ensures that they're going to be in fact coming in.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council President Sidner.
No question, no question for staff. I have a question for the applicant when the floor is open for him.
Council President, please go ahead.
Okay, this might be redundant. You said on the ten thousand square feet for shopping, you say you can't commit to a grocery store yet. Did I misinterpret something?
Council President Sidner, Edward Gibbs, again responding to your question. No, we, originally, we had been hopeful that we would have a retail center of some, you know, one hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. That would have required a grocery store anchor. We probably spent over four years trying to find a grocery store anchor, and that world has dramatically changed, what, what with, you know, the impact of, the impact of Amazon, the impact of online shopping, the, the, really the rollback of, of expansion on the part of grocery stores, and then, you know, the fact that there simply aren't a lot of rooftops in this area right now. So that is what prompted us to, to go back before the Planning Commission and the mayor and council to, to, to come, come forward with a more reasonable retail component, and that is forty thousand square feet. So there will not be a grocery store anchor for this center any longer. It's just, it's just, we, you know, we, we went to every grocery store two and three times and just couldn't, couldn't get any interest whatsoever. So we will not have a grocery store. And, and I would say that, you know, we've had substantial interaction with the community, with, with the residents of the fifty-six townhomes that make up part of Westside, as well as the residents of the multifamily component, and we have explained this problem to them. They were initially disappointed, as we all were, but I think it's fair to say they're understood.
Before you, um, do you know, I know it's probably too early to tell right now, but have anyone committed, any other retail stores committed to coming out of the area yet by name?
Um, we are, we are very close. We have substantial interest. I would actually defer to Mr. Blake Escherich on that particular question, but I don't think we're at liberty to, to use a name of a retail user who we believe is very close at this point. But, but we, we are in fact close with a couple.
Thank you. I think, I kind of figured that, that was thought maybe I just asked anyway. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Wilson, any questions for the applicant, or any of those additional people attending with the applicant?
Oh, I'm good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Wellford?
Yes, Mr. Gibbs, I haven't been out there in a, in a week or more, and I'm not sure. Am I correct in thinking that that traffic signal will also control the traffic at Royal Farms?
Um, you know what? I'd ask Mr. Lenhart, who has signed up and on the line, to respond to that. I know it's directly across from, from the Royal Farm, but Mr. Lenhart would be the best person to respond to that question.
Yes, good evening, this is Mike Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. That is accurate. The signal would be located today, so there's a four-way intersection. Van Dusen is the main line on the northwest side is the Westside Boulevard driveway that goes back into our site, and then on the opposite side is the Anderson's Corner access that goes in and serves the residential and the Royal Farms on the other side of the street. So yes, that four-legged intersection will be signaled.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Good question, Mr. Wellford, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Wellford?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing on this application, this Westside application. We do not have anybody previously signed up, however, I will pause to see if there's anyone on the call that would like to speak. Hearing no one, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Rick Wilson. I'll move to approve the detailed MXT final plan for the Westside application and, and the resolution number twenty dash oh four dash PC for thirteen six oh one and fourteen five oh one Westside Boulevard, with the technical report from staff included in the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wellford. Ms. Quillan, if you would, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Wellford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item seven, the detailed MXT final plan, Westside application, and resolution number two zero dash zero three dash PC, residential, one three six zero one and one four five zero one, Westside Boulevard, filed by Strip Matter Land LLC. The agenda item includes the public hearing on the application as well as the final action by the Planning Commission. We'll now have the staff report.
Good evening, once again, Madam Chair and commission members. The applicant, Strip Matter Conti LLC, is seeking a detailed MXT site plan approval to develop eighty-one townhomes and associated site amenities inclusive of drive aisles, sidewalks, sight lighting, parking, foam water, and the facilities. The amenities include a pavilion area, a tot lot, and a dog park. There will be vehicle access points from Westside Boulevard, access to commercial area, and six private roads within the residential area. Per Unified Land Development Code, three parking spaces are required per dwelling unit for a total of two hundred and four three parking spaces. Each townhouse will be providing four parking spaces for a total of three hundred and twenty-four parking spaces. In total, there will be four hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces for the residential area. The proposed landscaping meets the requirements of Unified Land Development Code and City of Laurel Landscaping Manual. This includes the landscaping along internal roadways and within the community. At the June eleventh, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission, the revised conceptual site plan was approved. During this meeting and the previous held on April ninth, two thousand nineteen, it was agreed upon by the developer that they would build a clubhouse facility to be used by the existing townhouse residents, as well as the new residents of the proposed townhouse community, should it be approved by the existing town residence homeowners association. After meetings and discussion by the members of the homeowners association, an agreement could not be reached for the clubhouse. The applicant is proposing a eight hundred and sixty-four square foot pavilion with a roof, no walls, and an open grass area. The applicant is seeking a reduction in the amount owed for the mandatory fee and lieu for open space as allowed per section twenty dash twenty-nine dot ten of the Unified Land Development Code. While there will be various open spaces provided, these will be privately owned and maintained by homeowners association to be created for the development. Section twenty dash twenty-nine ten F does allow for the reduction of fee and lieu that the Planning Commission finds that it is in public interest to do so. The Unified Land Development Code does not state how to go about coming up with the reduction amount for the private open space. Per the recommendation of the city solicitor, the applicant will be able to propose a reduction in fee and lieu in the amount of three percent of the assessed value of the proposed private open space area. Resolution nineteen dash thirteen dash PC was approved on November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, which included a condition that required a fee and lieu payment of one hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The three percent of the assessed value of the proposed pavilion area, dog park, and tot lot is fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars and three cents. If approved, the fee and lieu will be reduced to eighty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Staff recommends that the City of Laurel Planning Commission approve the detailed MXT site plan for Westside Residential Application nine oh two with the following conditions. All construction shall conform to ordinance number nineteen forty as well as the detailed MXT site and landscape plan as approved by the City of Laurel Planning Commission. The applicant must obtain all required City of Laurel permits. All roadways must be constructed per City of Laurel Public Works standards as stated in the detailed MXT site plan. The manual on Uniform Traffic Control Device, standard stop signs, need to be placed at all intersections along the minor street sides. The applicant must apply for a traffic signal permit for, with the State Highway Administration within sixty days of the passage of the Westside Residential Application nine oh two or Westside Shops Lot Three Application nine oh three, whichever is first, and must install a traffic signal at Van Dusen Road, Westside Boulevard, and Anderson Way intersection within seven months of the final State Highway Administration permit issuance for the installation of the traffic signal. The applicant has granted a reduction in payment for the mandatory, mandatory open space fee and lieu reducing amount owed to eighty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Prior to the issue of the first building permit, the applicant shall create a homeowners association and provide documents to the city in connection with the homeowners association, demonstrating that the private open space and all equipment, furniture, and other improvements within the private open space shall be privately owned and maintained by the homeowners association in perpetuity. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall submit to the city, city a recorded declaration of covenant running with the land in favor of the current owners of the private open space, its successors, and the sign that includes a provision restricting the use of the private open space to park and recreational purposes in perpetuity. Said declaration of covenant shall also include a provision that said covenant can be amended, defeated, or eliminated only with the consent of the mayor and city council of Laurel. The applicant shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations in development of property. And now I will invite Mr. Gibbs, the applicant's representative, to speak on this portion of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Once again, Chair Bettman, members of the Planning Commission, and Council President Sidner, Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices in Largo, here representing the applicant and owner, Strip Matter Conti LLC, and of course, Strip Matter Land LLC, the current holder. We have all of the same individuals, again, signed up in this case, they're available for questions. In addition, we also have on this, on this site plan, Jessica McMahon, who has registered to speak. She is a representative of NBR. They will be the builder of the townhomes covered by this detailed site plan, and you may recall that NBR was also the builder of the fifty-six townhomes that are already constructed within the Westside community. The, if you look at a site plan itself, and I don't know whether Mr. Love can get that up, or someone can get that up, basically, you know, in both the commercial and the residential portion of this development, all of the interior roads are going to be private roads, privately maintained. Access points will come off of Westside Boulevard. So whereas in the commercial detailed site plan case, I mentioned that there were two access points off of Westside Boulevard, technically those two access points also been used to gain access to the residential component. In addition, there is a, a third access point off of Westside Boulevard as it turns to the west, along the northern edge of these eighty-one townhomes. And then the private roads that are on the interior of the community, and basically the community is laid out somewhat in a horseshoe shape, I would say, and there are a number of private roads, and each of those private roads will intersect with and will allow access into the commercial component. So what that really achieves for us in terms of the development is to avoid and minimize the number of cars which might be going out onto Westside Boulevard, particularly if, if residents of the townhouse community are going to the commercial section and for whatever reason they can't walk, because of what they might want to be carrying back to their homes. In any event, there's, there's just a synergy, I think, that's created with the, with the private roads intersecting. The, the residential component is centered around a village green, which is characterized with a pavilion, there are pavers outside the pavilion, and then grass areas as well. You will all recall that we had met with the, not just the multifamily residents, but also the residents of the fifty-six townhomes already in and part of Westside. When, when we were pursuing the conceptual site plan approval, and then the preliminary subdivision plan approval, we made a commitment that we would work with the existing townhouse HOA, and that we would agree to construct a fifteen hundred square foot clubhouse. If the fifty-six unit homeowners association could garner the necessary votes to annex the, the homeowners areas within the new portion of the townhome. So the, the commitment was that the eighty-one townhomes would then become part of the existing homeowners association. My client would build the fifteen hundred square foot clubhouse with all the amenities that we had specified, the, and then we would have, of course, the dog park, the tot lot, and the extra parking. We would end up with one homeowners association for, for all of the units, the fifty-six and the eighty-one. We, we worked very, very hard with the existing homeowners association. We, we actually ended up having great relationships that were formed with the leadership team within the existing HOA. We worked with their management company to provide them estimates, which allowed them to prepare a budget, which they would need to sustain with their dues in, in order to maintain the clubhouse and the, the dog park, et cetera. You know, we, we really were pulling for the existing HOA to be able to get the votes they needed. We actually extended the timeline on a couple different occasions. We offered encouragement to them, we, we offered to help out in any way we could. They did have a vote, and they actually extended the time for individuals to vote, and unfortunately they were not able to garner the required number of votes to annex this HOA. So we fell back then to the pavilion, which had been the original proposal, and that's what we have. There are elevations of the pavilion area, it is attractive, you know, they have brick base for all the piers that support the roof, it's a hip roof, I believe, with, you know, which adds to the attractiveness of the feature. It'll, it'll be a natural gathering space for members of the community. The units themselves, you know, one, one of the really big concerns that the existing townhome owners in Westside had was that, that what we would build out here would not impair the quality of their home. And, and I, I believe it's very, very clear, if you look at the architecture that we have filed, that they are going to get equal or better architecture and, and just the, the amenities in the townhomes themselves. NBR is going to be offering the Mendelson and the Schubert, they have the identical fronts. The only difference is that the Mendelson is thirty-six feet deep, and the Schubert model is forty-two feet deep. But both of those models were 42 feet deep. But both of those models were also offered. Those were the two architectural models offered in the 56 townhomes that are already built. They'll be offered here again. They're slightly updated, but again, the quality is every bit the same as what was originally constructed. So we're going to end up with a product type that, at a minimum, is the same and likely will be even better with the slight architectural update. The only other thing I'd mention is that when we were before you with the preliminary subdivision plan, you know, all of our amenities are going to be private for these 81 units. And so we had to pay a fee and lieu, and that number was $101,250. You may recall that at the time of the hearing before you on the preliminary plan, I raised the issue of the ordinance authorization to obtain a credit against the fee and lieu payment for the facilities that we were providing. And so we talked about that during the processing of this detailed site plan. Your planning staff referred the matter to Mr. Cobb, your attorney, and the 3% number was arrived at, which results in a credit of about $15,000 and some change. So the fee and lieu reduces to $85,000 and some change. So even though there's no formula for that to be computed, we would go ahead and request that you approve that credit as calculated by the city attorney, Mr. Cobb. With that being said, again, Ms. McMahon is here on the line, and she can respond to any questions anyone may have relative to the units themselves. I can tell you that NVR had just amazing success with the 56 units that they constructed, and I know they're excited to be able to move forward with this product and add to the single-family attached fee simple home ownership opportunity here in West Side. With that being said, I'll sign off and answer any questions anyone may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. What I'll do this time as I go around, and I did note that Commissioner John Kish has joined us. Welcome. Rick Wilson, do you have any questions for staff or the applicant, if you would direct them specifically to either one?
None at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Welford?
Just a couple points of clarification to the applicant. So the pavilion, what useful purpose is that going to have? Will there be like picnic tables in there or something like that to gather at?
Yes, that's my understanding. It's going to be an opportunity for, first of all, I mean, people can cook out in the pavilion area. But in addition, the community will be able to have events in this green area and beneath the pavilion. And we're anticipating it will be HOA-type events where there may be celebrations in the spring and the fall. I guess there's always the possibility there could be a music offering that could occur there. But yes, it's a gathering space where members of the community can come together and share in their community.
Okay, but that wouldn't be accessible by people that are coming to the commercial side for shopping, really?
No, that is correct. No, it is not.
They wouldn't have access to it?
No. It is intended solely for the members of the 81 townhome.
Okay. And one other thing, just for clarification, is it correct that the address numbers 13601 and 14501 are the same on the agenda here for the commercial and the residential?
Well, I'll stand corrected by someone who may have a better grasp of that, but I think that those numbers just reflect of the property as it exists today. Obviously, each individual residential unit is going to have its own street address. And then the commercial uses on the four individual lots will have their individual addresses. And for the larger buildings, for instance, the, you know, the 10,000 square foot building that you approved just a few minutes ago, individual units will probably have the same address but with a different unit number. And Mr. Blake Escherick is here. He can reply to that if I'm wrong in any way.
I was just confused a little because on Item 6 and Item 7, they both have the same numbers. Look right?
Yeah, I just think that's because as we sit here today, you know, the property has not yet been legally divided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Welford?
No, thank you.
Mr. Kish, any questions?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I'm late getting.
No problem. Thank you for being here. I just wanted to, for a point of clarification, both applications, the one that we approved and this one, refer to the requirement for the traffic light and the applications and all of that. That is one application, correct? It was just included in both?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Council President Sidnor, do you have any questions for staff or the applicant?
No, ma'am. I have no questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this application for the residential application at West Side. Is there anyone on the phone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I will move to approve the detailed MXT final plan, West Side Application, and the Resolution Number 20-03-PC Residential, 13601 and 14501, West Side Boulevard, filed by Strip Matter Land LLC, as presented by staff. And any recommendations from staff?
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair? I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Larry Taub, city attorney.
Yes.
I would like to see if the maker of the motion could add a particular finding that the credit for the fee and lieu of recreational facilities is in the public interest, if that is what indeed the board believes or the commission believes.
Okay. Let me just verify. I don't have the staff report, but Mr. Love, is that is also written in the staff report? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's included in the analysis. And within the condition, it is talking of the reduction in there. So I believe, and I'll defer to Larry on this, if you want it to say the reduction and then say it is in the public interest at the end of it. Is that what you're wanting, Larry?
Yes, I just think that should be a part of the motion. It should be stated specifically that the commission finds that the credit is in fact in the public interest, yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, that would be condition number six.
And Mr. Love, could you read that? And then Mr. Welford, if after he reads that, if that is acceptable to you, will you please confirm? And then I'll ask for a second.
Yes. Condition six right now says the applicant has granted a reduction in payment for the mandatory open space fee and lieu, reducing the amount to $85,664.97.
If I could just give you a comment, that's fine, but I still think that the commission in its motion needs to state that is, in fact, that the commission finds that it is in the public interest to grant the credit. That should be part of the motion as well.
Yes. Bill Welford, I will correct the, or change the motion to be as made, but to also add that it is in the public interest that the condition number six be part of the motion that...
Yeah, they're cool.
Do I have a second?
I will second. This is Rick Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and thank you, Mr. Cobb, for raising that. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish? Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And if there are, before Mr. Gibbs and team sign off, Ms. Quillan or Mr. Gibbs, if there are things that I need to sign, let the office know and we'll work it out as to how we'll get those signatures on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much to everyone. Ed Gibbs here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, and before Mr. Wilson's ice fully melts, the 2019 Planning Report Resolution Number 20-07-PC, if we could have someone from staff, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. The city is required under the Land Use Article of State law to have the annual report approved and submitted to the state by July 1 of every year. For 2019, 49 new residential permits were issued all within the public funding area. The city is not required to submit a five-year mid-cycle comprehensive plan at this time. There were no land use changes, annexations, rezonings, new school constructed, or changes in the water or sewer category services for the city last year. However, there were five text amendments approved in 2019 that changed regulations in the city's Unified Land Development Code, which were Amendment Chapter 20, Land Development Article 1, Division 5, Section 20-1.7, Section 20-6.13, and Section 20-7.8 to allow for tourist homes in certain residential zones; Amendment Chapter 20, Article 1, Division 7, Section 20-17.2; Section 20-17.3; Section 20-17.5; Section 20-18.2; and Section 20-18.3 of the code to allow for existing billboards to be converted to digital billboards; Amendment Chapter 20, Land Development Article 1, Section 20-1.7, 20-6.13, to add medical health campus to the code and to be permitted by right in certain residential zones; Amendment Chapter 20, Article 1, Division 1, Section 20-1.7, Division 6, Section 20-16.10, and Division 14, Section 20-26.15 of the code to amend pavement regulations for driveways and parking pads; and the last one, Amendment Chapter 20, Article 1, Division 1, Section 20-1.7, and Division 9, Section 20-20.5 of the code to allow electric security fences in industrial general and industrial commercial services zones. All members of the planning commission have been trained, and this concludes the reading of the annual report for 2019, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Christian. Are there any questions for Christian on the report? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, Bill Welford. Go ahead, Rick.
No, go ahead, Bill.
I'll, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the 2019 Planning Report and to include the Resolution Number 20-07-PC as presented and read by staff.
I'll second. This is Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Before I conclude the meeting, I would like to thank Christian and all of the city staff for helping the commissioners prepare for this meeting. I'd like to thank the applicants and the participants on the call. And I'd also like a special thank you to the mayor, Council President Sidnor, and the council and all of the staff at the city for everything you're doing for the residents during this difficult time and continuing the business of the city. Thank you very, very much. And that is all the business we have. This meeting is adjourned.